Good afternoon and welcome to the school committee meeting Monday, or Monday.
Monday.
July 20th. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe, caring, learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. So today we are, is our retreat. We're televising the first portion, which will include a presentation from Pat Carrera, who is our MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. She is our representative. And then we will have a discussion about how we are going to form a search committee for the superintendent, and we have warrants to approve. So, Pat, I know you're still getting set up. So John, do you want to do the warrants?
Okay. I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2978 of the general fund fiscal year 2015 dated June 28th, 2015, in the amount of $133,709.17.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay. That's it for the warrants?
That's it. Yep.
So we'll just wait for Pat.
Carry on. I'm, okay. I just, I left my man here home. I apologize.
It's all good, Pat. You know, we're easy.
I know. I'm trying to.
It will come.
Well, that's not.
Wouldn't be an MASC presentation if it wasn't a little bit late, right? Just like the, just like the convention. Just kidding.
Oh, Michael, Michael, Michael.
I'm just kidding.
He's speaking for himself.
I am.
Yeah, no, he, you know.
I know. It was funnier in my house.
Tell my boss, will you? Tell my boss that. I'm gonna zip this.
Just step out. He was like just, oh.
What is it? I just want it to be all these stupid things. Okay. How do you do that?
So, how's everybody's summer going?
It was sad.
Fire so good.
Good.
How's your summer?
Not bad. I drove back from the Cape today. I want you to know, just for you all.
Just for us.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate it.
So, and, and believe me, I'll pay for that, okay?
One way or another, I'm gonna pay for it.
Sweet. Thanks. Um.
I know what that's, because I have it.
Michelle, you came all the way from Nantucket.
I did.
You get the prize. Um.
Where on the Cape are you?
Hmm?
Where on the Cape?
Welfley.
Nice. Nice.
Yeah.
That's.
It's down there, you know? It's like, it's down there. But it's okay.
Noam Chomsky lives in Welfley. You know him? Noam Chomsky, MIT linguist.
No, is he from there? Does he have a place down there?
Well, he lives in Lexington, but he's got a place in Welfley.
Everybody has a place in Welfley.
I don't.
So, well. Where the hell is it? No, I can't find it. Oh, listen, I can't find it.
Okay, everybody's looking at you.
Oh, nice. See, these are all my emails that I'm supposed to not have. Um. So I'll share them with you if you want to read them one by one. Um, Len sent me a, or not a, a presentation that works for you, and it's here. And, um, for all of you who don't know Liz, Liz is a former school committee member in Hatfield and currently works for Holyoke or the commissioner. I don't know.
Receiver.
We like to think it's Holyoke, but.
Would you all like thanks?
Yes.
I think there's enough for everybody. And you also mentioned, Janet mentioned something about a search, so I brought you some material. You can take a look at it. We can talk about it or not, whatever you all decide that you want to do. Okay? Um, just to kind of give you, I don't want you to get the horse before the cart, because I don't know what your plans are. Sometimes you start.
I don't know.
Oh, I don't have another one. Um, sorry. I usually make hundreds, but I didn't. Well, I'll have this one, so. Okay, um, we're gonna talk about today, if I can ever get this to work, roles and responsibilities. What you do, what your superintendent does, what you do together, and what you don't do together. And I guess what I want you to know is, it's the big C word. It's the communication word that we're talking about here. If you don't communicate with each other and the superintendent, then nothing gets accomplished. And if, you know, if you're sitting in the background and you're harboring things that are going on, and you know, did he said, she said kind of thing, that's not a good thing. You need to bring them out into the open and you need to talk to one another about it. And I know talking to one another is difficult because of the open meeting law, as Russ knows. Um, but I'm just going to, I wish I could find the presentation. I'm so sorry. Oh, Liz, there you are.
It's me.
Um, if I don't find it, you can follow along in there, in the one that I just sent you. Um, I'm not good at this, so, okay, here we go. I think this is it. Len sent me this and, no, this one. He used this at another, another district, so I just kind of played with it a little bit and put it, and put Long Meadow.
I told her we need to get her on Mac.
Mm-hmm. Not learning anything else. Retiring.
When you're not retiring, Pat.
Yes, yes, I am retiring.
Still doing more things fast around Mac and retirement.
Okay, so how do I get this to go into a?
Probably want to open it.
Up here? Yes?
Yeah.
See, I, you know, I'm just not good for this.
It's okay. You have many other talents. You do.
One hand. I sleep, I eat, I drive, I get into trouble all the time. Okay. Okay, so.
Probably close that small window out right here.
Which window?
The navigation, the X right there. The X right next to it.
Okay. Okay. Oh, yeah, I can look at it here, can't I? Because I want to do a power, I want to, I want to put it, this is from Hingham, so, so this is what's in there. Okay, key questions for an academic year. There's a checklist in there. Responsibilities of the school committee, roles of, what, responsibilities. Frequent areas of dispute, not that anybody here has any frequent areas of dispute. Whose job is it anyway? We've talked about that many times in the past. Some protocols, meeting management problems, finding the right balance. All of that is in there, setting up the agenda, and that's what you're going to find in there, okay? So I guess we could start off by saying, have you developed a timeline for the next year? That will include studying the superintendent's plan for the year and develop mutually agreeable goals for the district. That's probably key to getting along together. Have we, have you done an informal self-assessment? In other words, have you assessed yourselves as school committee members as opposed to goals for the superintendent or the district? What goals do you have as members of the school committee? What do you hope to bring to this, this body? Professional development, norms and protocols, efficient meetings, and resolve key roles and responsibilities. Have you begun the evaluation process yet for the superintendent? Okay, if that happens, then you need to have her goals and your goals and make sure you're all going in the same direction. Because if you're not, she's going to go one way, you're going to go another, and that's going to cause some serious issues. Do you have important challenges for the year? I think you'd have a couple, if I'm not mistaken, from reading the newspapers. There's a few things on your plate, and it's getting more full. I guess that's what I should say to you. You have any new collective bargaining agreements that you have to settle? Do you have any issues relating to student achievement that you have to address? Any financial issues? Did I read where your budget was accepted, so you might be okay there for now? But that doesn't mean that in the future you might not be okay. How are your relationships with your, we say municipal government, but you know I mean town fathers? Do you get along with them? Any capital improvements in anything else that, that you might be thinking about bringing forward? You can stop me anytime, okay? If you have a question, don't, don't hesitate. Okay, these are the responsibilities of the school committee. You hire, contract, and evaluate the superintendent. Okay? You identify the criteria for the evaluation. You all have a copy of that, I'm sure. Also, the accountability through the contract and the evaluation, and personnel policies for staff, including non-union personnel. That's what you're responsible for. Okay? Policy making, you own policymaking, okay? And there's hundreds of places where you will find policy. However, unfortunately, there's, there's very little guidance from the, from the laws about what policy and when administration and when school committees cross. So we always like to say, school committees are the what, superintendent is the how. This is what you want to see happen in your district, and the superintendent can either make it happen or come back to you and say, I can't do this with these parameters on this policy, so maybe you better revisit the policy and take a look at it. Maybe we should write it a little looser, or maybe not, maybe it's tighter. But that's what your superintendent would do. You can certainly assist, help, suggest how it should happen, but that piece is really belongs to the superintendent. Okay? Special responsibilities assigned by law. You're the final level for grievance, collecting bar, collective bargaining. You bargain with everybody in this district, whether they have a, you have teachers and administration, and strategic planning. Do you have a strategic plan?
Yes.
Okay. Is it moving along? Because it shouldn't stop. Okay, when you reach a certain goal on your strategic plan, you should have done something to keep it going. It just doesn't happen, and then it stops in January, and then you wonder what you're going to do. So you have to revisit it all the time. It's a living document, and that's very important. Fiduciary responsibilities, again, you own the budget. I say that as superintendent.
Can you define fiduciary for us, for the camera too?
Fiduciary means budget. You're in charge of, you're responsible for the budget in your district. Okay? Um, the superintendent and his or her administrative team will put it together, because obviously that's why you hired them. You're not all educational professional, or maybe you are, but you're not the superintendent. So the superintendent's going to work with his or her professional team to put a budget together that will satisfy what you all want to achieve with the goals that you've all agreed to work within. Okay? You also confirm the chief financial officer, and that's kind of a gray area, I think. You confirm that appointment by the superintendent. However, when it comes to that person leaving, your employee, you don't have anything to do with that. That's entirely up to the superintendent. So putting it very bluntly, the only thing you do is you hire and fire the superintendent. You also hire and fire your counsel, legal counsel, for collective bargaining, if you use a counsel. I don't know if you do or not, but, not you, is it, Russ? You hire and fire your legal counsel. Okay? You hire and fire any nurses that are not hired by the town, unless the town has taken that over. I don't know what your contract says. I don't know what your charter says about that, so. So that, those are the people that you hire and fire. You approve the confirmation of your business manager. You approve the confirmation of your special education director, however you want to say that. Okay? But you do not fire them. That's up to the superintendent, because the superintendent will have a paper trail by way of evaluation. Questions on that?
Pat, do we, do we, I'm going to yell because they can't hear me, but do we also confirm assistant superintendents?
Yes.
Okay.
You confirm, I'm sorry. I do allow you them out?
Yes, but that's okay.
They're very important. Yes, you do confirm.
All right, just making sure.
And I think I would have gotten there anyway, but, um, yeah, you do. So that, that's the other, I knew there was one more when I was saying, and I thought, okay, I've lost my thought. The assistant superintendent, but the same thing happens in that, in that case. You hire, you, you confirm the hiring of that person. You do not fire that person. That is entirely up to the superintendent to do. Okay? Questions? Okay. We can always go back if you want to. Okay, your responsibilities to the community is open meetings and ethics standards. That's what you owe the community. You owe them an open meeting, unless, of course, for some reason, you can't have one. You have to represent your community at your meetings, and I'm going to say something to you that I say all the time and people get very upset with me. Your meetings are meetings held in public. All agree? They are not public meetings. Okay? Which means, unless in your policy you have allowed public speak time at your meetings, it doesn't happen. Or unless the chair has permission from the, from the school committee to have a public speak time, or allow someone to speak to an issue, it doesn't happen. Questions?
If that's allowed once, does that set a precedent?
Yes, it does. So I would be mindful of that. But I think you have a policy that, that speaks to public speak time, if I'm not mistaken. When we did your policy manual a couple of years ago, that was in and amongst the policies. Yeah. So, you know, but it's important that you remember that, you know, I can't remember if yours says that somebody can talk for three minutes, or two minutes, or whatever it is on an issue. It's good to have that cut off, because sometimes, you know, my, my boss likes to call people, you know, season ticket holders. They come to every meeting. They talk about everything that's on the agenda, and they monopolize your whole meeting time. So your meeting is a meeting that's held in public. It is not a public meeting. You do have a policy that allows public speak time. However, I would limit that public speak time. I would have the chair with the, with the permission of the school committee to limit it to three minutes. If your, if your room is crowded with people and they're all speaking about one issue, my advice to you is, the chair should announce that, that you have 20 minutes or half an hour that you allow for public speak time. Everyone who wants to speak can speak for three minutes or more. If they don't get to speak, they can submit whatever they were going to say, if they have it with them. The other piece of that is, if everybody is saying the same thing, then they should get together and come up with their own plan. Like, instead of having 26 people speak to the same issue, maybe you only have 10, or four, or five speak to that issue, and then turn the rest of the information in. That seems to work much better. So we have a question.
I do.
I, I knew that.
I, I knew you knew that.
I knew, I knew.
So, um, it's been requested of us by community members that, we, we do have the public speaking time, but they also would like, you know, after a, a presentation is done, or while, which is our business part of the meeting, they're suggesting that we allow public comment and question then. We don't, since it's a working meeting for us, that's not something we're obligated to do, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
This is your business meeting. Okay? If you want to, if you want that to happen, then, you meet what, twice a month?
Yes, ma'am.
Sometimes.
Sometimes more.
Little bit more, on occasion.
Your business meeting is twice a month.
So, so what I'm going to say to you is, you have two meetings a month. So make the first meeting your business meeting, or the second meeting your business meeting, and make the first or second meeting your meeting where you get presentations, whether it's from principals, whether it's from teachers, or whether it's whatever. But that kind of makes it easier, and then people know, oh, this meeting, they're going to be talking about this project or this program at this school. So that's my advice to you. Anything that the superintendent brings to you is on your agenda, and that's public information, unless you go into executive session, obviously, that's not.
What about using subcommittees for that purpose? You know, anyone who wants to, all our subcommittee meetings are posted and they're open to the public, so we could just have some time there for people to.
You could.
Offer comments, but then, then the subcommittee gets over, takes over and discusses.
Correct.
So, I mean, that would allow for it.
It would allow for public speaking? Absolutely, but I, I can tell you that if the public has an issue, they're not going to want to go to a subcommittee. They're wanting, they're, they're going to want to come to the full committee.
Even though it's the appropriate place to go?
Yes. Well, you know, it depends on what the issue is.
Well, yeah. But I mean, you know, if it's about expenditure, or about a cut in the budget, or, that would be appropriations, right?
Yes.
Subcommittee, excuse me.
Yes.
All right.
So then you would come, you would come to the school committee with all of that information and your recommendation as a subcommittee regarding the budget, the appropriations, and the information that you received from the people that attended your, your subcommittee meeting.
I think I'd like the public to know that they can attend subcommittee meetings. That should be out there for everyone.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's, that's not an issue. I mean, that, you know, public can go anywhere. That, you know, it used to be you didn't have to, you didn't have to post subcommittee meetings, because you didn't have a quorum. Used to be. It's changed. So we post them just in case.
We have a quorum for a subcommittee.
No, you shouldn't have a quorum in a subcommittee. You should never have a quorum in a subcommittee.
Only one person shows up?
We only have three members on subcommittees.
Yeah.
Russ?
Don't we have to at least?
There's a quorum of the subcommittee.
Right, you need a quorum of the subcommittee to hold the meeting, so you need two out of the three.
But not a quorum of your school committee.
But we don't have a quorum of the.
I'm not talking about that. Okay. Quorum of the subcommittee. Thank you.
Okay, what, when, when you say quorum, I go to school committee, okay? Because it's all about the school committee. So if you, if you hold a meeting of a subcommittee and you have a quorum of the members of the subcommittee there, that's fine. You're going to run into an issue if one member, there's three of you, there's five of you. How many are there?
Three are on our subcommittees, Pat.
Okay, and there's seven of you, so you, you, you don't want four. And unfortunately, what we say at MASC is, the, the chairman is ex officio of all subcommittees, which sounds really good. You run into issues when the chairman attends a subcommittee and wants to speak. Now we have an issue. Or speaks and says, we want to have a vote. I would call for a vote. No, that's, that's not a good thing.
But the chair can attend any subcommittee as a observation.
Correct.
Do they have to state that they're there observing and not participating?
Do they have to state that they're just there? Well, you know what? If the chair of the subcommittee is wise, the chair of the subcommittee will say, our chairman is here in attendance. However, because of the laws, the chairman may not, will not be recognized to speak. We have, we have the best regulations and laws in the country in Massachusetts. Did you know that? They tie your right hand to your left leg and your left ankle, and you can't do anything, so, and it's going to get better. Wait.
Are you talking about public records reform?
Just everything. Just everything. Do you agree with that?
I do.
Yes, no?
I agree.
Yeah, she agrees. See, she knows. Okay. Any more questions about this? Oh, image projected on cable broadcast. The best thing that ever happened to school committee meetings was local access. The worst thing was local access. Okay? Because you used to go to a school committee meeting, back in the carson buggy days when I was in Springfield, we didn't have any local access, so we just went, did our business and left. Now everybody has to gussy up, look good, get their hair done, put on the makeup, make sure they wear blue or red, and then they always have to be, you know, like smiling and, and at the camera. However, the camera catches everything, so when the superintendent says, I would like to recommend Les Lefon become the next assistant superintendent, you don't mind that, do you? And somebody, and somebody on the committee goes, wow. Go home and watch yourselves. Amazing, amazing, the body language. So just be very careful about that. Anything else?
What about defining insidious and detrimental? That last line.
Yeah, that's language my boss likes.
It's kind of a general.
Likes that word, insidious, huh? Is that a Glenn word?
You mean evil people, or what?
Somebody usually comes to the committee with their own agenda. Ergo, the, the season ticket holders. Because no matter what you do or how you do it, you're wrong. Okay? Doesn't matter if you all agree and the vote is 7-0, or 6-1. There's always someone from the, from the district, from the community that disagrees with you, and who voted for all of you. Okay? That's why you all won, because that one person voted for all of you, and they have an ax to grind. Doesn't matter what it is. If it's budget, they're going to point out that there's more money in this account than there is in that account, how do you account for that? If it's a personnel matter, you know, sometimes we're our own worst enemy. Sometimes when parents get up to speak about issues involving children, they forget, they don't realize that it's their child that they're talking about, and while we cannot.
Or someone else's.
Hmm?
Or someone else's child.
Or someone else's child, you know? While we. While we can't do that, they do it and I shudder because it's, now everybody knows whose child it is. Or it's your next door neighbor's child. So, those are, are insidious and detrimental. Do we have to leave the room?
No.
Move me.
No problem. If that's for me, I'm not here.
Uh, no. It's a summary and I have way to go.
Oh, okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Do you wanna, you want more?
No, that's fine.
Okay. 'Cause I can give you more. Okay? Okay, so enrolls. When blue and yellow become green, and this, this happens a lot, in fact, this happens almost all the time. Budget-related issues, development, approval, oversight, inline item transfers. Okay, this is, this is the way this works. Your superintendent can transfer within, what do I wanna say? A line item. No, what do they call them? The, what do they call them? Where do they call them? Really, don't go away from me.
Transfers?
Within the control room?
There you go. We'll use that. Sounds good.
I'm sure.
Okay. She or he can transfer within that control room. Whether it's personnel for the schools, whether it's personnel for custodians, whether it's personnel for, um, I don't know, paras, okay? Any of that. The superintendent can transfer that money without your approval but with your knowledge. Okay? This is what she has to do throughout the year to make sure that you, you all come out where you're supposed to be, okay? She cannot transfer from that personnel account to, uh-
Utilities.
Facilities, yes, thank you. Okay? She can't do that without your approval prior to her doing that. Okay? That needs your approval. So, some school committees allow superintendents to, to, to transfer up to ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars in a year without coming back to them. I don't agree with that because you own that budget. You wanna know where it's going and if there's a deficit in one account, you better know it before you get there. Okay? Most, most transfers happen the last half of the year. Because, you know, we're, we're through the winter. Hopefully, things are okay. Hopefully, we don't have another winter like we did last year and, and monies get, get transferred around to, to, to save the district. However, be, they, be very careful about that, okay? You need to approve it. You own the budget. You own the money. Parent complaints that are brought to a school committee member. This is probably numero uno for all of you because, as I said before, you're all elected. You owe something to the electorate, to the community. They voted for you. They believed in what you said when you were campaigning. And sometimes when we campaign, we say things and we realize when we get there that we can't do that. That's not within our purview. And that, that stings and sometimes people get very upset about that. I always say if you get a complaint from a parent and they say, "Teacher so-and-so in this school," what you should do is send that, that parent right back to that teacher. Have you talked to that teacher? Have you talked to that principal? Have you talked to the superintendent? You know, don't, don't try to fix it yourself because that never works. Particularly if it's a special education child. I always say litigation. If you end up in litigation and you know more than, than the attorney knows, then you're in trouble. So, I would, I would really, really send them back. I would also hang up the phone and call the superintendent and say, "Did you know I just got a call from such-and-such so-and-so regarding teacher A, B, C, or D in building whatever? I just want you to give you a heads up on that." So, that your superintendent can be out in front of the issue. So that if you follow up and you say to them a week or two later, you know, "What happened with that issue?" she can tell you. Or you can ask, "Can you please keep me posted and let me know how this goes?" Before it comes to the school committee. If you think it might and you don't want it to come to the school committee because that's where parents open their mouth and insert their foot when it comes to their kids. And we do it all the time. I mean, we do. Worse when you're a grandparent. 'Cause nobody's better than your grandkids. Okay? School committee members contact the school administration and faculty. This always rubs people the wrong way. "What do you mean I can't call? What do you mean I can't stop? What do you mean I can't do that?" Well, there's a couple of reasons why you can't do that. First of all, if you just show up unannounced at, at a school, you don't know what's going on in that school that day. You don't know if there's testing going on. You don't know if they're about to have a fire drill. You don't know what's happening there. So, the best thing for you to do is if you really wanna go to Blueberry Hill, call the superintendent and say, "I'm gonna, I would like to go to Blueberry Hill today. I'm gonna call sup, the principal and let them know that I'm coming." You know, heads up is always good as opposed to sneaking in the back door and checking to see what's going on. That's not a good thing. You wanna keep it all, all above board. The same with teachers. If you're there to see a certain teacher about your child, then one has to assume that you have an appointment to see that teacher. I would think. You can't just walk in in the middle of a class and disrupt the class and say, "I wanna talk to you about my child." That's, that's not a good thing either. So, always let people know if you are going to go or you would like to visit a school. Very important. If the roof caved in on Blueberry Hill, please, Lord, don't let that happen. If the roof caved in on Blueberry Hill, I don't wanna see all of you at Blueberry Hill. And you know what? Superintendent doesn't either. And neither does the chief of police and neither does the fire department and neither does the guy in charge of facilities. Because they have a job to do. And they don't need you in the way of saying, "What happened? Why did it happen? Is that, what's that up there? How come this happened over here? How come is that?" You need to, you need to take a step back and wait. That's that big C. That's that communication. Superintendent should be in touch with you or the assistant superintendent or Diane be in touch with you to let you know. Call the chair, say, "This is what happened. But we've got it under control." Okay? You don't wanna be there in the midst of everything. That's not your role. Questions? Just kidding. 'Cause sometimes I get. Okay, anonymous complaints against staff. You know what I used to do with anonymous complaints against anybody in the district when I was on the school committee? I throw them away. Because if you're not gonna sign your name or you're not gonna tell me who you are, I don't wanna talk to you. I have more important things to do, like making sure all of our kids are, are, you know, are great with their student achievement. You know, that's numero uno in my book. That's what you're all here for, to make sure that all the programs are, are right where they should be and the kids are too. So, anonymous complaints? Thank you very much. You know, I can, there's nothing I can do for you. You won't tell me your name. Call the superintendent, call the principal, call the teacher. Don't be fresh, just be... Okay. Problem principals? There are none in Long Island, correct? I mean, nobody has any problem principals. There are none in the state. We are very good about that. Problem principals belong with the superintendent. That's what the superintendent does. The superintendent is the one that evaluates the principals. If you're hearing tales and they're anonymous, throw it away. If they're not anonymous and someone's willing to put their, their moniker on it, then I would get in touch with the superintendent and say, "What is this I'm hearing about?" Because you need to know that. You don't need to call the problem superintendent or principal and say, "What's this I'm hearing?" That's not your job. That's the superintendent's job. Same with student discipline. That's not your job either until you get them home. Then what happens at home stays at home.
Same to you.
For the most part. Yes, no?
Definitely.
Okay. I mean, we used to be afraid to go home because if we did something wrong in school and they, they called our mothers or fathers or grandmothers or whatever, it was, was worse when we got home. So, that's not what you do as school committee members. School-based issues, graduation, scheduling, discipline, and appeals. You need to be very, very careful about how this is handled because some of these things may end up on your lap. Okay? And you don't wanna be so involved in something that's going on that you have to recuse yourself from that issue, from that decision. So, I would, I would be very mindful of, of all of these things that I've just said. Setting the meeting agenda and/or the rules of order, that usually falls within, with the, the chair, sometimes the vice chair, and the chair, and the superintendent. Because the superintendent is going to put together your business meeting agenda with Policies should dictate how far in advance somebody wants something on, on the agenda. If it comes in, fine. If it doesn't, well, that's too bad because posting is very important and you have to post what your agenda's about. But the chair and/or the vice chair sit down with the superintendent. If the school committee individually has an issue that they wanna bring forward at a school committee meeting, they should go to the chair first. And say, "I would like this to be discussed." Then the decision will be made. If it's, if, if it's a personnel decision, you don't wanna be talking about that, not knowing what you're talking about, okay? Hiring, promoting, assignments, reorganization, staff restructuring, layoffs. Didn't you just go through that whole thing recently? And it got to be very tedious, I know. You can certainly talk to the superintendent about all of those things. You could certainly say, "I don't think that principal A should go to building B because I don't think that that's a good fit." But only the superintendent can make that change for various reasons. And the superintendent should be able to defend that. And just FYI, this is what's happening in the district. We're transferring principal A to building B and we're taking principal B from, from building B and putting them into a building A. So, you need to know that. Nine times out of ten, before that happens, you already know that because it's a small community and people call you and tell you these things. Best thing for you to do is to ask them to talk to the superintendent. That's not what you do either, okay? Crafting policy? You know, we're all not good at that. Some of us are, some of us are not. But I always say, let the super, if you know what you wanna say, you know, I always say, "Thou shalt not kill." That's very easy. This is what the school committee says. Thou shalt not kill. Long Island School Committee believes nobody should kill anybody. Okay? So, then the superintendent says, "Well, how am I gonna, you know, how am I gonna make that not happen?" Well, that's, now you've taken your policy and you've put it at her feet and said, "Here you go. Figure it out. Do what you have to do, but come back with something, you know? Thou shalt not kill somebody with a knife, a gun, or, or, or whatever, whatever, okay? But a stick, I don't care." But they should come back to you with some kind of a idea. Okay? Procedure. I don't know about you, but I know when I was on, on the school committee in Springfield, they used to bring us curriculum books to be read and they would bring them to us in, in cartons. I don't think I read one curriculum book because it was just unbelievable. Don't get bogged down with curriculum. That's why you have a superintendent. That's why you hired the superintendent, Chi, as the educational leader. If there's something happening in curriculum, and I think the law has addressed a lot of it in terms of sex education and, and, and things like that, you, just back off from it. I had a school committee member who served with me who used to read every single book that was used in curriculum. And I thought, "She must be out of her mind to read every single book." But that's what she did. So, listen, all the more power to her. Doesn't mean you can't. You certainly can and you can ask for a book, okay? District determined measures of student performance. This is interesting 'cause this gets a little tacky now. Who decides? Okay? I'm, I'm gonna tell you that it's the superintendent that decides the district determined measures, okay? That, that the superintendent will use to evaluate teachers. I mean, the principals will use to evaluate teachers, but you can also use them to evaluate the superintendent. Did they meet? Okay? And this new evaluation allows you to do that. Communicating with the public is just that. You should have one spokesman. It doesn't mean that you can't talk to the public. It simply means that once a decision is made and the school committee has voted it, whether it's five to two, whether it's seven oh, whether it's six one, doesn't matter. You, you should, as professionals, support the school committee. Can you have your own ideas, thoughts? Yes, of course. And can you communicate that with the public? Yes. But to stand on a street corner or in Dunkin' Donuts or, what's that one I don't like across the street? Starbucks. I'm sorry, I love Starbucks. That's where I get my ice cream. And talk about how stupid your colleagues are because they voted this way. It, it sets a really bad precedent. You really shouldn't be doing that. You should be, you should be enforcing all of the votes that you take because someday, instead of five to two and you're one of the two, it's gonna be five to two and you're one of the five. Happens that way. That's just the way it goes, okay? Dealing with confidential information. I can't even tell you how important that is. I can't tell you how many times I get a phone call from a school committee member who says, "I cannot believe it. We just left a collective bargaining meeting behind closed doors and I stopped on the way home to get a coffee and one of my colleagues was in there telling the girl behind the counter, who she knows, what we did." Not acceptable at all under any circumstances. Not acceptable. Okay? We talked about the line item, the budget management. Legal counsel. I don't, I don't, I hear this a lot. "Well, I can't call, I can't call my legal counsel." What do you mean you can't call your legal counsel? Oh, I have to go through the superintendent. See, that's funny because you hire that person and you fire that person. So, you should be able to call that person. But if you do call that person, you should let superintendent know that you've called that person. "I checked with our legal counsel." Or, "I'm going to check with our legal counsel." Okay? That's that big C word again, communication. Just remember, you hire, you fire your legal counsel. Go ahead.
Is our rule that we would call, didn't we go through your US chair?
Right. I think that's in our, our norms or in our policy.
If that's what's in, if that, right. If, if that's what you have to do, then that's fine. But you have a right as a school committee member to call your legal counsel. If you have a policy that says you're going to go through your chair before you do that, that's fine, but you should also notify the superintendent. I had a school committee member who said to a superintendent, "Well, I don't understand why this money is, how come we're spending so much money, bless you, with our-
Thank you.
-with our counsel and, and, and was told, 'It's none of your business.'" They all know. Wrong answer. Right question, wrong answer. Okay?
Each time a committee person calls the legal counsel, though, they're gonna be billed, right?
Absolutely.
Well, that can become a problem too, can't it?
Yes, it can. That's why you should go through the chair. That's why if you have it down in your policy, you go through the chair. "I would like to call our legal counsel. I have an issue with this. I want clarification on this."
Why not have the chair call?
That's entirely up to you as, as an individual.
Well, if the chair refuses to call, I guess, then.
Gotta use your common sense for that. If the chair says, "I'm not calling for that," that's really stupid. Not that you would ever say that. Okay? But, or, "Okay, I'll call, all right?" Or, "If you wanted to call, that's fine." Some councils, when they don't last very long, won't take a call from an individual school committee. I have been told. And as I said, they don't last very long. Which kind of makes sense.
Right, yeah. I think there's also the sort of the piece about, well, what is the right reason to call counsel? Because sometimes you can resolve it by speaking to the superintendent first. You know, I mean, I know that obviously on this committee, they're, I mean, like, I know I've called counsel when I've had questions about conflict of interest, you know, to get a clarification. And they've been nice enough to call the Ethics Commission for me because they've got a better number than I do, you know, something like that.
No, they don't, they really don't.
That's what they say.
Well, either way.
They tell you that, but they don't.
But, you know, regardless of that, I mean, like, that, I felt like was a good use of counsel for me personally.
You have a right to call the Ethics Commission. And you will talk to a real person.
They never call back.
I didn't say they will call you back. I just said you have a right to call the Ethics Commission and you will talk to a real person. And, and, and what they will say to you is, "We'll take that under advisement." And unfortunately, you never really know if they have until it comes out in the paper that, "Oh, Russ Dupree was fined $10,000 because he, you know, blah, 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 blah." So.
They're a fun organization.
Bless the state of Massachusetts. Okay? Use of school facilities? That's part of your policy? You should have a policy on that. You should have a procedure on that also. You know, again, it's, yes, people can use our facilities. How does that work? What's the fee? And all of that comes from the superintendent that you would approve. Okay? Can't just arbitrarily open it up and say, "Yeah, go ahead and use it."
Let me ask a question. If a local group, say, like the Democratic Party, wanted to bring in a speaker to speak on behalf of the presidential ticket, and they wanted to use the high school building, let's say, for an event thrown open to the town. We control the high school building, but it's a public event. We had something similar to this happen a couple of years ago.
Oh, with that market?
With Deborah Schultz, yeah.
Oh, I thought it was, oh, yeah, with Debbie Watson.
It was the market campaign, I guess, yeah. And as a result, there was a big to-do and the pressure on the, from the town. Shut the whole thing down.
Well.
It seems to me if we have a committee that's in charge of our buildings, that's where responsibility should stop.
But you also have a, a policy around that? That, that says there's, there's no, you know, nothing political shall happen in the schools? There's no political agenda that should go home with kids, you know? I mean, you need to check on that and see, too.
I don't think we have that as a policy. We've thrown the school open to presidential debates, gubernatorial debates.
Huh?
Different political parties in school time, you know?
In school time?
Yeah.
Wow.
Social Studies Department set up a debate between the two major presidential parties. It's equal time, of course, you know?
So the lawyer's got his hand up.
I saw, I had this comment quite a bit, but the Office for Political and Campaign Finance, if you give them a scenario, they'll tell you whether you can do it or not. But it generally revolves around equal access. But there's ways to do certain things. If you do it the wrong way, then there's a big problem, though. So if you call the state, they'll give you an answer.
Yeah, you know, in this case, it's not better to do it and then ask for, you know, forgiveness. It's better to, to find out what you can and can't do.
And I think after that situation John's mentioning, we updated the policy so that we don't invite that type of situation again.
Right. It's just not a good thing, unless it's weekend. If it's a weekend, the school's empty, there's no classes going on. If they want to pay the fees, be responsible, put up the insurance that's necessary, I'm assuming you, you require insurance. They want to do that, that's fine, but, you know, anything politic I, I would shy away from?
Isn't that the heart of social studies? Study of US history?
Sure, but you know what? You could bring in a member of the Board of Selectmen who was a Republican to one class and have him talk, or her. And then the following week, you could bring in another member who was a Democrat and have them talk, too. So, I mean, it's equal access, it's like Russ said, it's, it's.
Yeah, well, I, I think that's a rule, a fairness doctrine, so to speak.
Well, that's part of a curriculum. What you're talking about is not a curriculum. What you're talking about is just throwing it open and saying it's, it's a debate between opposing parties. And now, how many parties do we have? We have Democrat, we have Republican, we have Green, we have Independent, we have, you know.
Of course, that rule has been used to stifle debate on the national level.
Well, there you go. So. I'm just saying, at this level, I would, I would give it serious thought. And I would, I would check first. Sorry. Okay. Okay, use of, oh, we said that. Opening or closing a school, that recommendation should come from the superintendent with backup material, letting you know that this is why we're opening the school, or this is why we need to open a school, or this is why we need to build a school, and this is why we need to close a school. You are not architects, unless some of you are, and you can't make that decision. The superintendent will, will sit down with an architect or whoever is, can make that decision and come back to you with some, you know, viable information that will allow you to make a decision. But just remember, the superintendent is the educational leader in your community. That's important. Okay?
Are you saying that we have to, if she recommends it, we'll make a vote? Or it just stays as a recommendation?
No, you would vote on her recommendation. I mean, if she would come, you know, if she comes to you and says, you know, "I think that we should do this," make sure she has the backup, there's a paper trail. Make sure that she answers all the questions that you have. And you might not vote on it the first time around because you need to get input from the public, which you certainly will do.
Right.
And maybe put off the vote for, until your next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
To clarify on that, though. We should charge the superintendent with the power to investigate whether we need to close.
Well, that's part of her.
Shouldn't that come first? Because superintendent isn't just gonna say, "I think I'll do a study of closing the, the high school." I mean, it, it has to come from some rational.
Well, if she, if, if your superintendent is your educational leader and she's looking at your district saying, you know, "We're losing kids over here or we're gaining kids over here, so we need to do something," then, then that's what she would do. That's her job. And if it meant closing a school, as I said, a paper trail is always good. She needs to come to you with a paper trail saying, or at least let you know at a school committee meeting, "I'm looking into the possibility of closing Blueberry Hill." I keep saying, "Blueberry Hill," I'm sorry, I don't want anybody to feel left out.
Well, there's a live topic coming up. We have two middle schools.
Yes.
Possibility we're gonna close one. So we need a study to see whether that's a good idea, a bad idea, et cetera, so.
Okay, so that's good. So who recommended the study? The superintendent?
Well, yeah.
Okay, so. So we're good.
Okay. So it starts with that committee. I mean, we're sitting around, we're not in a total vacuum.
No, but, but, you know, it starts with the committee going to the superintendent or one member going to the chair and saying, "You know what? What are we gonna do about this? Are we closing this school? And shouldn't the superintendent be looking at that?" Shouldn't be done at a public meeting? Unless you've already done that behind, you know, the scenes? So. Without a quorum? I have to say that a lot, without a quorum, without a quorum. Okay? But the recommendation should come from the superintendent. The superintendent is worth her salt. She's gonna know that you need to do that. And when you go to the chair and you say, "I think we should close this school," and the chair goes to the superintendent or says to you, "Go to the superintendent, talk to the superintendent about it," and, and the superintendent's one up on you because she's already doing that. That's what she does. It's not what you do. You can suggest, but you have to vote it. Once it's done, a done deal. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think that you should just be sitting there. You have a, a huge responsibility with the budget, with policy, with collective bargaining, with everything that you do. And particularly when it comes to goals and where your district is going. I mean, that's huge. And, and sometimes we don't look at that as huge. Sometimes we look at that as just so much falderol, and it is not. You need to do your homework. Not that you don't, you do. Collective bargaining alone is, is, is huge. Okay? And you have one of the best collective bargaining attorneys going. Liz, not you.
Oh, there are you.
Yes. I mean, you, you, you just can't get any better than Liz. She's just phenomenal. She's been there, she's done that, she understands. And she isn't gonna lead you down any garden paths. Okay? So, so hang on to her. Okay? Remediating grievances, who hears them or who resolves grievances and how? Only comes to you at the very end, very last. You shouldn't be really involved in grievances. Because that's not what you do. Unless it's serious and unless it does get to you. That's why you shouldn't get involved at the earlier stages with a parent. Because you never know, you may end up recusing yourself from, from sitting down to hear agreements. Okay? Okay, criticizing a public employee in public. I know you don't do that. You know, and I know you don't use four-letter words like "fine" principles and things like that to talk about principals or staff or teachers or whoever it is. Should never do that. You have an issue, bring it to the chair, bring it to the superintendent. That's that communication piece again. That's so very important. You just can't sit down at a public meeting and do that. People can sit at a public meeting and call you anything they want to because you're elected. You can't sit at a public meeting and call them anything you want to because they're not elected. So just be mindful of that. Okay? Staff restructuring belongs to the superintendent. I don't know a school committee member unless, well, I do know one who was an retired superintendent in one district who ran for the school committee in the district that he lived in, so. So he did know something about it and the superintendent, and he used to talk about it all the time. But unless you really know what's going on, you shouldn't be involved in staff restructuring other than to know that it's happening and these are the reasons why it's happening. Okay? School committee meetings and rules of order. If you have our policy manual, then you know how we like to say that this is how you should run your meetings, Robert's Rules. Sometimes, school committees. Hoyop doesn't use Robert's Rules, do they?
Oh, yes. Mainly.
Kind of.
I mean, it can get a little complicated.
Because you're jumping back and forth.
We follow Robert's Rules, yes. We did, we did, when we had meetings.
That's right, you all know that, that there's no more school committee in Hoyop, right?
Well, there is.
Well, there is.
Just can't do anything.
Right.
Except meet.
Aren't you glad you're Long Meadow? Hiring the legal counsel, I think we talked about that earlier. That belongs to you and only you. And confidential information is just that, confidential information. You just don't want to be spilling the beans outside. Or if you go to a cocktail party or if you're having a beer on the back deck and your neighbor comes over and you say, "Do you know what we talked about? You know what those teachers want?" No, it's not a good thing to do. Okay?
So does anyone have any specific instance or issue or question that Pat can answer? Because I know in, in light of time.
Are we, oh, okay.
Yeah. I want to get into talking, I know you want to give us a little bit of information about superintendent searches and how to go. And I think, you know, we're gonna be talking, we already follow the MAS C norms. We wanted to look at updating some of them.
Okay.
Because I noticed that that's been updated. So I just want to make sure that everybody gets a chance for these gray areas to ask Pat if you, you have anything. Liz?
I just, I just wanted to have a clarification. So are you, talking about bringing up issues that you've heard from around town, it's best to go to the superintendent and call them rather than bringing it up in a school committee meeting where people don't know what's going on and things like that?
Yes. It's, it's, it's best to let the chair know and the superintendent. And if you can't get the chair, then certainly let the, the vice chair know. But certainly let the superintendent know. Bringing it up at a public meeting without anybody knowing, it's, it's like no surprises. We don't want to see that happen. It's like the superintendent bringing things to you and you say, "Well, where did that come from? It came out of left field." No surprises on anybody's part. Okay? It's, it's better for the committee. It's better if you talk to each other, but don't vote or don't decide when you're talking to each other. Because that's illegal. So you can't say, "Oh, I'm, I'm gonna do this," or "I'm gonna do that." Or somebody else can't say, "Oh, I'm gonna do that, too." Okay, so now we're, now we're going down that road that we can't go down, so. Any other questions? I mean, there's so much information in here. You know, if you have nothing else to do while you're sitting on the beach, just read it.
And then we can just call you.
Instead of a neuro Robert's, you know, or Gone Girl or whatever.
Russ?
Yeah, I was just gonna go back to something you asked about with the school building closures. I mean, I would think practically speaking that for something of that magnitude, the whole committee would want to, to vote before. I mean, obviously, there would be a recommendation by the superintendent to start investigating. But before we actually really started that process, I think the committee would, would normally vote on a topic like that. Especially because there might be some financial aspect to, to it. So it wasn't clear, is that kind of what you're saying? Is that we'd have a kind of a multi-step process before we actually went down that road?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that a school committee never shouldn't go to the superintendent and say, "Are we gonna do this?" Or "Do you think we should close that school?" Or whatever. I'm saying, if there's a decision to be made, then the, then the superintendent should be the one to come to the school committee and say, you know, "Dealing with my staff, my administrative team, you know, we think it would be in the best interest if we closed Blueberry Hill." Pardon me.
But I think, Russ, if I'm hearing you right, so after the superintendent came forth to the school committee and said, you know, "My admin team and I think that we should close Blueberry Hill," I think what you're asking is, should the school committee then vote on that for the superintendent and admin team to further investigate? Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yeah, I would imagine, it wouldn't be just coming to us and saying, "I think we should do it." It would be, "I think we should investigate it."
Right.
And we'd vote on, yes, that makes sense, go investigate it. I mean, that's what I would. And I think that's what Marie would do anyway.
Right.
More than a one issue, or a one meeting topic, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, closing schools are, it's, it's, you know, it's very emotional. And it involves everybody. We closed six schools when I was on the school committee in Springfield. And then we closed Classical and Tech. That was huge.
Did you have something? Or did he just?
I have one, I have one question.
Go ahead.
So on that sort of same vein of, you know, hot, hot topic issues like school closures or whatever, what, I mean, obviously, the way in which we engage the community basically depends on the community and how much they want to be engaged. But, you know, from your experience, what is the right level of community involvement? And what is, like, too much and what is too little? Like, how do you strike that balance, I guess, is the right question?
That's a really good question.
Thank you.
There are always, there will always be the naysayers. There will always be the negatives, the ones that say, "Oh, no, you know, this is, this is not what we want to do. And you didn't, you didn't listen to us, so I'm not voting for you next time." That's the, the politics of it.
And the truth is, they probably weren't voting for you the first time, so.
Well, not according to them. Everybody voted for everybody, so it's a given. I think if you have public speak time about it, I think if, and I think what would happen is that what Russ said, when you investigate what's going on, that means, that just doesn't mean that the superintendent sits in her office and makes phone calls. That means she goes out into the community, she goes to the schools, she has meetings with the PTO, with, with school councils, with, you know, to say, "Okay, this is what we, we would like to see happen, this is what we think should happen" based on demographics, based on educational process, based on all of this. And then get the feedback from them. And if people are not happy with the decision that she's made, then certainly they can come to the school committee. The school committee is always the last resort. But then again, if the school committee is happy and satisfied that she has done everything in her power to make sure that what she's doing is, in fact, correct, and you vote it, and it's four to three, so be it, it's four to three. Then you just have to learn to like one another, which can get very difficult.
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
So, community, so in terms of a school closing, let's say, community forums are a great way to gauge community interest. And sometimes you can't, you don't know the entire plan of accessing a community forums until you start to have a couple. And having them are important, because you, because, in my experience, it seems like I've had plenty of it lately.
Right.
The first few community forums on almost anything are typically underattended. And so you need to get out into places where you want to hear from people, the communities that are being affected. And you need to do that a few times, so that people can understand that you're really there to hear them, and they'll come in. Long Meadow's probably a little different in terms of people speaking out. In Hoyop, Hatfield, we never had a problem.
Right.
Have a community forum, town shows up. So you need to get out, you need to be consistent about getting out on important issues. Otherwise, you're at a final vote, and the room's packed, and people are unhappy. There's never too much, really, is there?
No, no. And the other thing, too, is for you to attend those community meetings in the different schools, in the community, along with the staff, and the, you know, because that's where you're going to hear.
A lot, you're going to hear a lot.
Thank you.
Is that, is that good? Does that answer your question? Nothing should be done in a vacuum. Nobody should be doing anything behind closed doors, unless you absolutely have to, and that's collective bargaining. But other than that, everything that happens in public education is just that, public. And it should be left that way, and it should be kept that way. But the other big thing is communication. If you don't learn how to communicate with one another, whether you agree or disagree, it's not going to happen, so. And you will harbor all of those he-said, she-said things, and that's not good. Okay?
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
You wanted to tell us some about suggestions for superintendent search?
I brought you our little brochure. And Liz is going to pass them out. And our little brochure, our big brochure. Kind of gives you an overview of how we do searches and why we do them, and how long they take. I can tell you that it would take you anywhere from four to six months to do a search. If you hire a search firm. That's entirely up to you. Whether you hire MASCE or not is, again, it's up to you. Whether you decide to do it on your own, and you can do it on your own, and we will give you all kinds of technical assistance. And that's free. But searches are huge. And I will tell you that the pool of candidates, and I'm sure Marie would agree with me, is a puddle. There are not that many good candidates out there. Are they qualified? Yes. In other words, do they meet the qualifications that the state says they have to meet? Yes. Does that make them good superintendents? No. So, you know, you need to be mindful of that. And fortunately, MASCE has been doing this for a long time, and we understand that. So, you know, we can get applications in and go, "No, yes, no, no, no way." I like to look at a search as, "How is this person going to fit?" Russ, you've heard this before. You know, "How does this person fit in this community?" Because that's what it's all about. It's how that person fits in your community, how they're going to get along with the community at large, how they're going to get along with the school committee, what they believe in, and do they believe in what you believe in? What is your vision statement? What is your mission statement? What are the criteria that you want to use? You know, all of this has to come together. We have a survey that we've put up, and we will help you with the survey. Even if you do the search on your own, we will help you put up a survey to find out what your community is looking for in the next superintendent. We will come out and stay with you, hold your hand through it all. If you hire MASCE, we're there 24/7. We do focus groups, not as many as we used to. We find that they don't usually, people don't usually come out unless there's an issue in a district. But we do sit down with administrators, with teachers, and talk to them, and have them talk to us. And we encourage school committee members not to be at those meetings. Because sometimes people don't like to speak.
Do you have any general advice about, should we look for someone who is a superintendent and has some years' experience? Or should we look for an assistant superintendent who has some experience, looking to move up? Is that an area you feel comfortable generalizing about?
Well, I could say yes to both of those. Okay? We do not have many superintendents who are currently looking unless the district that they're looking at will make it worth their while financially. And unless the district is a district they feel comfortable in.
But does that, if a superintendent is looking for another position, does that say something about their unhappiness with their existing committee or school?
It could. Okay, it could also say, "I've always wanted to be in Long Meadow, so, you know, finally, I've waited my turn, and now it's opening up, and I'm going to apply." Or, "I started my career in Long Meadow as a teacher," or, "I live in Long Meadow, and I'm a superintendent in Springfield." Tell Danny, "I'm sorry."
What about generalizing about a doctorate?
I always...
Should we look for a doctoral candidate with a doctorate?
No.
Why not?
Because that would only shrink the pool that's already small. I would say you would ask, well, they have to have a master, so that's a given, okay? I always advise school committee members to say, "Advanced degrees preferred," which could include a CAGS, a Certificate of Advanced Graduate Studies. They could be in a doctoral program, and they could be all the way there, with the exception of writing the dissertation. And if you say you want someone who has a PhD, then I can't bring you, you can't look at that person, because they don't have their PhD, but they're almost there. I get a lot of applicants say, "ABD," all but dissertation. And that's, and that's good, if you allow that to happen. But if you bring it in and you shrink those qualifications, you're going to have trouble. And if there's somebody internally that you're looking at, that you think could step up and become the superintendent, then I would encourage you to offer that person a contract for a year and see how it goes. See if they, in fact, are really the person that you want. Because they may not be. And they may not want, once they get there, you know, it's one thing to sit and look at the corner office, it's another thing to be in the corner office. Sometimes second chair is better than first. That's, that would be my advice to you. Don't limit yourself with qualifications of a PhD. Make the salary so that it's compatible.
No, I'm not saying PhD and doctorate of education.
Doctor, well, you're going to find that most of your candidates now have a DDS, but doesn't, they're not PhDs.
What about going beyond just statewide search? You recommend all New England?
We do all New England, yeah.
Or Northeastern?
We do. We do nationwide.
Nationwide.
Sometimes we get a good candidate from, I don't know, Oklahoma, California, whatever, who meets all of the qualifications that the school committee has voted on. So we'll bring them forward. Don't limit yourself, again.
Russ?
Do you, I know some firms charge more to do the national aspect of it, so it's all just included in whatever you charge.
We're just, we're just one, you know, we're 12.5, I think it is.
So national, do you mean just like the National Education Weekly?
Well, we encourage school committee members to advertise in Education Week, because that goes all over, and everybody who's in education reads it. So that's the biggest bang for your buck. Usually, an ad in Education Week will cost anywhere from $1,800 to $2,000, maybe $200, $200, depending on how big it is. You don't need a big ad. You know, your district is going to sell itself, people are looking and seeing. We also belong to the National School Boards Association and the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers. And that's free, and that's nationwide. That goes on their website. So when we send something out, it goes to them, and they put it up on all of their websites in all of the 50 states. And that, that's free, that's big time, you know, you can't, you can't get better than free.
So the advertisements would be, besides that one, if we did national advertisements, we pay extra for that, but not for the underlying fee?
Yeah, and national advertising is, it doesn't give you any more than what you get from Edweek, I don't think. And you know what? It's very expensive. An ad in the Globe is, I know it's more than $6,000 now, but it used to be, an ad this big and this tall was like $6,000, $7,000, and that's one ad.
And School Springs, not just Massachusetts, right? That goes all over.
Yeah, we don't use School Springs.
Oh, you don't?
We just never have. We've sat down and talked with them about using their, but we don't, we don't think that they offer enough for administrators at that level, at the superintendent level. That doesn't mean that you can't put it up on your own website. And we put it up on our website, and honestly, we get more hits off of our website than School Springs does for superintendents.
Does anyone else have any specific questions about doing a search for Pat?
And I will tell you that we don't send you a bill until you've already hired the superintendent, and you negotiated a contract, and you send us a copy of the contract. Then you'll get a bill from us. The only bill you'll get before that is the advertising, because that has to be paid in advance. So we would pay it, and then he would pay us for that, so.
Kim, you thought you had something?
I have one quick question. Do you have any recommendation as to who you think should be on a type of a search committee? Like, how many people in the...
Nine to 13 people is a good committee, okay? I discourage school committee members from serving on search committees, but that doesn't mean you can't. If a school committee member wants to serve on a search committee, then that's fine. But no more than two. It's almost a turnoff for your community members. I would advise, if you're going to have a search committee, you have three parents from each level. Perhaps a sped director, two administrators, and three teachers from each level. You might want a senior citizen, someone who's very involved. You might want a student. I've had students on search committees. I have two students on the Palmer Search Committee right now. They're excellent. They're really excellent. It's a huge commitment of time. And it's also, the confidentiality is huge for search committees, so. But that's what I would recommend. That seems to work well. I've had 18, I've had 22. Which is like a Halloween party sometimes, you know. Did I give you 13?
I think four, three, four, five, six, nine, 10, 11. 12, 13, if you add the two school committee members.
Right. I kind of, yeah. I leave it open, because sometimes school committee members want, they want to serve on search committees. We're going to be doing a search right now in Hope Dale, and the entire school committee wants to be on a search committee, which puts us in a whole different category in terms of the open meeting law. And, yeah, so it's going to be interesting.
And so why do you recommend no school committee members on the search committee?
Because I think it levels the playing field. Once you have a search committee, and they've interviewed the candidates that we bring forward, and they've sent three to five finalists to the full school committee, then you all get to see them for the first time. Okay? And then nobody can say, "Oh, he was a great interview," or "She was terrible," or whatever. It's clean, and, as I say, it's a level playing field. In my humble opinion, that doesn't mean that you can't serve on a search committee. And I don't mind if you do.
Who should choose among, say, there's a number of people interested in being on it? Who should do the choosing, once you have the categories set up?
You should set up the categories. This is what you're looking for, and you should have people apply, or the deadline, all right? And I always like to say, "Do it by lottery." Particularly if you get parents, you know, we're saying three parents, hypothetically, one at each level, and say you get 25 parents, and 22 of them are from the elementary level, then that's, you know, that's not going to work. So I would say by lottery. Usually what happens is the school committee would do it on camera at a meeting. And they would, and before that, they would submit their interest and what category they would like to be in. Does that sound good?
No, it sounds like you're drawing lots.
Well, I guess you are.
Gambling on it, rather than making some kind of an informed decision. I'm not sure who should make this decision, but...
You should.
Yeah.
Well, we determine the categories.
Correct.
Yes.
And then it's, you know, what Pat's recommending is, then it's up to chance of, you know, how many people wish to apply for each category. That's her suggestion. That's not saying we have to follow her suggestion, that's just her suggestion.
Sometimes if you hand-pick, I'm sorry, Russ.
Well, I was going to say, ultimately, if you do a lottery, the chances of, even if you have one person that maybe we'd all agree shouldn't be on the search committee, it's one out of 13 people. So the lottery kind of gets us out of handpicking parents who, that's kind of a tough call for the committee, because how are we going to say, "Well, that parent really is more involved than the other parent," or, I'm not sure how we do that. I do understand your point, though, that we could get somebody that maybe doesn't have the best interests of the school at heart, or whatever. But it would be a small percentage of the overall vote.
And I would be surprised if you got that many applying for one, you know, for parents, or whatever, even any of, any of the categories, so.
Oh, Pat, this is Long Meadow.
I was going to say the same thing.
They're already applying.
You know, that was here, but I wasn't going to say it.
We've already gotten several emails of people wanting to serve on the committee.
Then you know what? You should separate them, and you know, you should make a decision among yourself and say, "Okay, this is what we're going to do. This is, these are the categories we're looking for." Okay? And then go with that. And you have to, you know, set up a timeline first.
And we wouldn't necessarily set up categories before we would choose to hire an outside firm, because that firm would help us select those categories.
Correct, yeah, they would.
So we're, really, we're in our initial stages of deciding, do we want to do this on our own or hire a search committee, and then moving forward to hiring that search firm?
Right.
It's kind of a segue into the next agenda item.
Absolutely.
She's very good.
I try.
You timed that so well.
I try. But I'd like to thank you, Pat, and you, Liz, for coming out and...
Thank you.
Refreshing us, you know, refreshing the community on what our roles and responsibilities are. I know sometimes it gets easy to get bogged down in day-to-day and forget about the big picture. So I thought that this was a great time at our retreat to kind of review that. So I'd like to thank you.
Thank you.
Both of you for coming.
Thank you. Can I just unplug this? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I brought you some little goodies. We like to... Yeah, I thought it was...
No, she's not Liz.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Did trip.
Is it blurry?
It's blurry.
Add some tritium.
Or multifocal content.
Thank you very much. I keep forgetting.
All right, so our next agenda item is, in fact, discussing the superintendent search and how we wish to move forward. So I think, you know, one of the things that Pat mentioned was, is this something that we want to do ourselves? Or that we want to, you know, look at hiring an outside firm to do it?
to, you know, look at hiring an outside firm to do? I think that's the place we need to start with it.
Can I just say something?
Absolutely. Sure, Pat.
All you need is three quotes. You don't have to have an RFP.
I think, Tom, you looked into it, and by our town charter, we need an RFP.
The charter?
We can go with quotes, but then we're obligated to accept the lowest quote.
Correct. You do an RFP, correct.
Okay. Even though the law's changed and it's $25,000?
$10,000 to $25,000. You can get three quotes, but you're required to accept the lowest bid. If you do an RFP, you're developing criteria to evaluate the firms on, and then you don't always have to select the lowest price proposal. It's the most qualified. That meets the criteria.
Well, I don't, you know, I, I, that's your charter. That's what that says. So, you have to do what your charter says. Fine.
Okay. Obviously, we know how you feel about that.
Well, you know, how do you know?
Your face says it all, Pat.
Really, it, you know, see, it's that, told you, the best thing that happened was local access.
And the worst thing to happen was local access. I believe you said that earlier.
I did say that earlier.
All right. So, with that information, and I guess we'll get into that information in a minute, should we decide to go with hiring an external firm rather than doing it by ourselves, which is my personal recommendation. I don't feel that I'm qualified to do an outside firm. I, I don't feel that I'm qualified, nor have the time to, to put into what's going to be required of a superintendent search. But that's my own opinion. You know, I'm happy to hear what everyone else has to say so we can decide how to move forward from that.
Well, I think it kind of goes without saying that we probably should hire a consulting firm to help us with this because I think, as Pat just kind of said, and as we all kind of know, none of us have any expertise in conducting a state or nationwide search for superintendent. You know, and I think having people who specialize in that is, you know, probably the smartest thing for this committee, you know. And it'll certainly go a long way in helping us get a good pool of applicants, quite honestly. You know, and I think that's probably the most important thing, is getting a good pool of applicants to, to be able to interview. You know, and so I, you know, I think, I mean, my own personal opinion on this is that we should develop that RFP, you know, that we should appoint, you know, three members of this committee to evaluate those firms based on the results of that RFP and make a recommendation to this committee to go forward.
I'm happy to hear from anyone else.
I think we should go with an outside firm.
I feel like I'm just looking at this side, so I'll look on over here. Kim, you agree?
I agree. I think an outside firm is a smart decision. Do we know what they typically cost?
Well, according to the MASC, $40,000.
$40,000. Well, no, I think Pat said for MASC, she quoted 12.5, she thought. But I think, you know, the idea of going RFP versus quotes, because then quotes were obligated to go with the, the least amount, you know, the least cost that comes in, and that may not be the, the firm that we want. If we have, if we wanted to have more say-so over the search firm, I would think we'd want to go the RFP route.
I think we benefit from that. What do you think?
I do.
Any thoughts?
I mean, I think with anything, when there's a procurement thing, you know, procurement involved in municipal government, getting stuck with the lowest bid is not always the best thing. You know, and I think we saw that with our boilers last year.
All right. So, what I'm hearing is that we're in consensus to use an outside firm and to go the route of RFP rather than a quote.
Would that, would that second decision preclude us from using MASC?
No.
MASC knows Massachusetts. We know them. We're members. You know, there's a closer fit between us. I don't know who the other group is, and I
I don't know until
So, what's the difference between a quote and a RFP here?
Well, the quote, they just need, would need to tell us the, the price for what they charge, but then, based on the quotes that we receive, we are bound to go with the lowest quote. Whereas in RFP, they still have to give us their pricing, but we have more say-so based on criteria that we set for what we want in a committee.
I think that would be better, in my judgment.
I agree with that.
Is that going to, I agree. Is that going to affect our timing? Like, are we already a little late into this?
I don't think we're late into the, the hiring process or the timeline. I think that's why we're talking about it now so that we can move forward if we were choosing to go the RFP route, because I know Tom's going to need to, to work with a committee, a subcommittee and Chad on, on getting that out and then reviewing it. So, I don't think that we're behind anywhere. I think that's why we put it on today's agenda rather than waiting any longer.
I suggest you backtrack from December, January is being the time you want to hire. Your, some of your top communities are now hiring in December, so the competition will get stiff for the best candidates. So, if you backtrack from, from December, you'll really be in the, the ballgame. If you get much later, you're going to lose candidates because other people hired earlier.
Right.
Yeah, and I was, so what I was thinking is, the RFP could be, everybody does them, so you're just going to take somebody else's RFP probably and use it. So, I'm not even sure. I think if we just voted to do the RFP route, just do the RFP and then come back to us with whoever. I mean, just skip the subcommittee idea completely and just move that part forward because we'll, we'll just get the RFPs and then we'll vote on one of the three. Usually, it's three that apply.
Right. Do we need to, though, put in the RFP the criteria of what we want for a search committee, or what we want them, the tasks that they want, we want them to perform? I, I didn't know that part.
We do, but it's, I mean, superintendent searches all look basically the same. The only aspect that's a little different is the national part, but like Pat just said, that's the ads, and do we want to do national ads? But we could figure that out later. So, as long as we don't roll that into the RFP, it would just be an RFP for superintendent search. There's so many around here that just did it. I mean, we could use, like, West Side's or, MASC did West Side.
And Tom, is that something that Chad would be agreeable to, or that you and Chad can work on with us, just giving that directive at this point?
I think so. I think their boilerplate enough unless there's anything specific, but even the national ad you can do on your own. You don't have to use the firm to secure it and pay for it. You just contact whichever advertisement you want to put it in and let them know whatever publication it is. So.
And we advertise for how long? Two weeks, three weeks?
I would say a minimum of three weeks, possibly even longer, depending. I think that'll be information your firm will probably work with you on in terms of telling
No, I think, are you asking how long?
For the RFP?
For RFP.
Minimum of two weeks.
Okay.
I'd just like to get that aspect out of it because the next steps take a long time.
Absolutely. So, do we need to do that as a motion, or just as consensus?
No, I think the only motion we would need would be to, you know, probably approve the RFP document, right? No?
I don't even think you guys have approved those in the past. I mean, when we've gone out for food service, the RFP itself didn't come to school committee prior to it being published.
That's true. Okay.
Okay.
So, then it would just be to select.
So, there's consensus to move forward with an RFP for a superintendent search?
Correct.
Do we have one from, here's the list?
What, the RFP? I mean, I don't
I don't think so. I don't know that we did an RFP process last time. I mean, we have the documents of what we, how we
I have a folder, but there's no RFP.
Yeah, I don't think we did.
So, then, Tom, is that something that you and Chad work on together?
Yeah. Contact some of the local districts that have done it recently.
I mean, Palmer just did one.
Yeah.
Palmer, Bedford, Braintree.
All right. So, you'll work on that, with getting that out, and then we can determine a subcommittee who will review those RFPs and, and work with, with that candidate. Is that acceptable?
Well, do we even need to do that? I mean, we could just come back to the, we just haven't come back to the school committee.
To the full committee?
And president.
I just skipped that. I'm just saying, because that's another week, and, you know, it's probably quicker to just
So, maybe that subcommittee then, maybe if there is a subcommittee, it works with whoever we choose to develop the search criteria, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, Tom, can we charge you with that?
Sure.
All right. Anything else on the superintendent search committee right now to discuss before we adjourn into our retreat?
No, I think, I think that we, you know, defer to that, to whoever we award the RFP to or award the contract to, to kind of help us determine how we staff the search committee.
Right.
You know, I mean, there's not a whole lot we can really do right now
Until then.
Until we know who that person is, you know.
That, that's why I had asked that question, is, you know, I think we will need to rely on their expertise if, because that's what we're paying them for. That's what they've done, is to help us structure the search committee membership that'll best suit what we're needing. So, I don't think we'll be able to make any decisions on that until we get further along in the process. But I guess, you know, starting sooner than later, Tom?
I will email Chad soon as I get a chance.
I, I know you will. All right. So, everybody's comfortable with that? All right.
Do we need to say no? We're going to have a 13 person or a nine person?
I think we're going to wait, John, until we have the firm and we work with them on determining what's going to best suit us.
Okay.
Okay? So, then, Diane, do we need a motion to adjourn out of televised programming?
Well, we're not really adjourning. We're just turning off the cameras.
We're not really adjourning. We're just no longer televising. So, we're going to move, right. We're going to take a break, move into our retreat. We thank you all for watching, and our next meeting is next Monday at 10:00 a.m. Is that a 10:00 a.m. meeting? Okay. So, next Monday at 10:00 a.m. Thank you so much.